Ubusutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
False, we just have a moment of silence for the shooting victims? Thank you. Right at this time, we have a public comment. Members of the public will be allowed to address the Board of Items of Interest to the public that are not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Okay, we have several public comment cards. There's no particular order, but we'll take Zachary Hammond.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board Supervisors. My name is Zachary Hammond. I'm the Emergency Operations Manager for Sutter County. Just wanted to do a quick update on the flood disaster. Staff are actively working on collecting damage assessment. This data will help my office advocate on behalf of the county and our community, especially when working with CAL OES and FEMA requesting financial assistance. It's critical that we collect as much data as we can. And to report that storm damage, you can go to suttercounty.org or bepreparedsutter.org. There's a button at the top of both pages for reporting storm damage. Currently, I have roughly five and a half million dollars in public damages shared between the levee maintenance areas, Uba City and the county, and then roughly another half a million dollars in individual damages. We're currently scheduled to give CAL OES and FEMA a tour of the high-dollar damage sites next Wednesday. Additionally, SBA, the Small Business Administration, has been authorized for economic loss to help the small businesses, agricultural cooperatives, and nonprofits. SBA was on-site today sharing their information with staff, and we provide that information on the website as well. Lastly, USDA has authorized hot food waivers for CAL fresh beneficiaries, and that information is on the website as well.
Thank you very much. We please encourage the public to submit their losses to the county. Be greatly appreciated. The next speaker card we have here is Chris Starky.
I don't think it hit the button. There we go. So I had, well, two different things, but I'll start with the first one. Museum and libraries. I've been doing a lot of thinking about this, and I think it's time to seriously consider, instead of making the taxpayers pay for those, to privatize or go to nonprofit. And let's be honest, I mean, other than to read a book, a paper book, you don't need a library anymore. You have the internet. I can find anything, and I can find it like 1.2 seconds compared to eight hours of going through little cards. And I remember that when I was a kid. But yeah, I just think it's something that needs to seriously be considered, because that's money that could be used for far more important services in this community. So that's what I get to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Farley?
Hello. I'm 25 from South Uba City over there by Carl Baines' area. I'm here to thank everybody, Zachary Hamilton, for the flood assessment in Sutter County levees. I was thinking for a search for Sacramento mutualizing. Sacramento during New Year's was flooded, man, like, name it, flooded. Sacramento fire was there with a helicopter. It was, there was OES there and FEMA, everybody in Sacramento. So I think exactly for that. Also, I want to thank Zachary for his service with Sutter County. And so Shawitz, Debra, the Marine guy, funny sheriff, funny sheriff, Brandon Barnes, Stephen Smith, and Sarah. I'm going to thank Sarah for helping out with Section 8. Like, she did a good job with Section 8, Dana. Thank everybody. You could have come, Baines. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I don't see any other public comment cards. We will move on to the consent calendar.
Move to approve consent calendar. Removing item two. We want to pull that one for a minute to discuss some items on it. And item six is really on the agenda packet listed as item seven, and item seven is really six. Item nine is really 10. Item, excuse me, item nine is really 10. Item eight is nine, and 10 is eight. And on item 14, if you looked at your agenda packet, there was about 150 pages that were not page numbered.
Supervisor, I think you're referring to mistakes that may have been made in the full agenda packet that were first sent out. The board clerks have since corrected those mistakes, and the current agenda numbering is correct.
Oh, the numbering is correct on the new one. Okay. I just wanted for the public to know that if they looked at it, they're trying to figure it out, that might help them.
I'll second the motion.
Do we pull it number two? Can we move it later, once we get the other supervisor to move it further down?
Can we move that? Is there a reason we can't do that council, right?
It's up to the chairman.
Is that okay?
It's up to the chairman.
All right, so that, so we're only moving item two from the consent, correct?
Pulling item two from the consent, and I second Supervisor Conant's motion.
All right. And just for the public, the consent calendar groups together those items that are considered non-controversial, or which prior policy direction has been given to staff to require only routine action by the Board. The Chair will advise the audience that the matters may be adopted in total by one motion. However, the Board may, at its opinion or upon request of a member of the public, consider any matter separately. So it's been moved and seconded?
One through 15.
One through 15, taking out item two. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
All right. So we now come down to a presentation. If I could have the Seroptimus team come down and join us at the front, please.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to take off my glasses, because I don't need them for reading. So if you want to give me dirty looks, you can, because now I can't see you. Thank you, Chairman Baines and your supervisors for your time today. I am Sandy Drown with Seroptimus of Marysville, Uba City. We are here to present our local, to present our club's local anti-human trafficking video to bring awareness to our Ubusutter area. This is the fastest-growing criminal activity with a $150 billion annually that it generates. We know that we can't change what happens nationally, but we can definitely influence what happens to our local community, our children, and let those who prey on our community with today's modern-day slavery that we are bringing this to light. Thank you to my Seroptimus sisters for being here. And this year, just following this, as we will have, we do an annual backpack drive. Two years ago, we did 100 backpacks for Uba City PD. Last year, we did 50 backpacks for Uba County Sheriff, and this year, we're looking for another local law enforcement agency. So I can't see you, but I'm hoping they're looking at me. And so we're hoping to do another backpack drive to help support you guys when you're out in the field and you have those encounters with those people that are being victimized. So with no further ado, I'd like to present our video that we were able to create this year.
They troll our neighborhoods in search of their next victim. They have a prolific presence on public social media websites by creating fake profiles and building trust through false promises and lies. They exploit that trust to lure women and children away from home and into sexual slavery or forced labor with no end in sight. Human trafficking is real, and traffickers are here. They're constantly paying attention and watching for an opportunity to lure and trap their next victim. Stay informed. For more information, go to humantraffickinghotline.org or call 888-373-7888.
That was just our local. Hopefully, you guys recognize some spots on there. But that is, we're trying to just bring awareness to our local community. So thank you for the opportunity today. So back to you, Chairman.
So if you could, the Seroptimus group, if you could join us up front for a little proclamation that we put together for Human Trafficking Prevention Month? So I'll just read what we have written here on the proclamation. "Human Trafficking Prevention Month, whereas human trafficking is a public health issue and crime that affects individuals, families, and communities across generations, exploiting the most vulnerable amongst us all and weakening our collective well-being. Whereas, human trafficking is defined by the Trafficking Victims Protective Act, is a commercial sex act induced by force, fraud, coercion, or when a person indeed induced to perform such an act is not 18 years old, or the recruitment, harboring, transportation provision, or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud, coercion, or for the purpose of subjection to involuntary servitude, burdened debt, bondage, or slavery. Or whereas, estimated 27.6 million people are subjected to human trafficking globally, including cases of human trafficking reported in every state and territory across the United States. And whereas, human trafficking can happen to anyone, but certain populations are desperately at risk, including people affected by prior abuse or sexual violence, poverty, or unstable living situations, homelessness, and as well as those systematically marginalized as underserved. And whereas, people can be trafficked in person or online in industries such as restaurants, cleaning services, construction, and factories by strangers or someone they even know, including partners, parents, and other family members. Whereas, Uba City Police Department, along with other regional agencies, are committed to a coordinated, community-wide response, to work with diverse partnerships to comprehensively address human trafficking. Whereas, increased community education on how to identify victims, increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected, will help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas, Seroptimus International of Marysville, Uba City is working to increase public awareness that human trafficking is in our community and assist in maximizing efforts, as well as utilizing all our community assets to better serve victims of sexual and labor exploitation. And whereas, National Human Trafficking Prevention Month is an opportunity to raise awareness and educate everyone on how they could prevent and respond to human trafficking, passed and adopted this 24th day of January 2023." Wow. Sorry. That was a mouthful. We really like to thank Seroptimus for all that you do for this community and continue to bring awareness. I know that there's several events that you've had in the past, and we look forward to supporting you also in the future. Though we'd like to present this on behalf of the Board, signed by the Chair, Carl Baines. And if any of you'd like to, if you need any comments at this time, feel free.
I'm sure you guys have heard me on the microphone enough. But just thank you for your support. And this is a tough topic to talk about, but we're super excited. And then just to shout out to Mr. Harris, who helped us shoot the video. Who knew that we had some local talent here? It was a great video. But anyways, thank you for your support, and we hope to have continued conversations around this.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer, we're just going to get one photo, please.
Chairman?
Yes.
Chairman, excuse me for the interruption. Before we move to the appearance items, there is a public commenter, Mr. Starky, who had two public comment requests, but he didn't fulfill his full three minutes, so we thought he'd bring him back up for the remainder of his three minutes.
Okay. I thought he mentioned that both of them were here, and I thought he was going to talk on both at the same time. Sorry.
She said "Mr." Makes me feel older than I am. My other item was on services, and the reason I'm going to talk about this is because of my experience as a public servant working in community development with two different jurisdictions, not including Sutter County. And I think about the privatization of services, which I know has been brought up before. And one of the services I'm going to use, and I'm assuming Sutter County Public Works does not do their own paving, so they don't have a paving machine, a paver. I don't know for sure. But to use that as an example, Uba County, for instance, had a paver. They did a pretty good job. But what I look at is, and I'm going to use an example of, let's say the county went and paved from Railroad to 99 on Bog Road, and they did a fine job. But two weeks later, it has to be worked on because of some problem. Well, now, we're paying for that job to be done. We're paying for the guys to be back there. And then when they finally retire, we're still paying for them. Why don't we privatize it for paving projects, so that when that project has a problem, then the contractor who did it is responsible for it. It's out of his pocket to pay for it. And then when his guys decide to retire, he's paying for it, not us. We pay for way too many services that can be easily, easily privatized. So I think it's something that needs to seriously be discussed and talked about, because it's getting out of hand with how much money we're paying in this county for some of the services. And to be honest with you, a lot of our services are not as great as they could be. So I'd rather see them privatized, because then if somebody's on the hook, and it comes out of their own pocket to fix it, then they're going to do a better job, and we're going to get better services. And guess what? You won't hear a lot of people complaining about the roads, because we'll have better roads. Which I don't complain about roads, because I think, I drove in Baghdad after the Gulf War. I've seen bad roads. And Yolo County does not have that good of roads either.
All right, Mr. Starky, thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, we're going to go back to item number two, and that was the Board Committee assignments.
Through the Chair, what is, what is that? Looking through the agenda, what are we voting on there? On two, is it as we stated?
As a listed agenda, if you had any, if you wanted to make any changes to the, to the positions, you can make them at this time.
Now, this was Supervisor Conant was on the Behavioral Health Board last week, so this is a change that is brought up now? To switch me for Behavioral Health?
The other, the other, one other problem on item number two, I serve on the RCRC Board and the Golden State Finance Authority, and it really needs to be just one person, because it's held at the same time, and they switch back and forth during the meeting. So it's really impractical to have somebody other than that person doing the RCRC Board serving now on the Golden State Finance Authority. It should be me on that one for item two.
To the Chair, if I may just clarify that one. It is actually to make the same alternate member on all three, RCRC, Golden State Finance Authority, and also the Golden State Connect Authority. You are, Supervisor Conant, you are still the main member on all three.
Okay, because they had me down as not being on the Golden State Finance Authority at one point.
That was on the last meeting. That's why we brought it back to this meeting.
We got that one straightened out.
All right. So I put it before the rest of you four. I mean, I've done Behavioral Health for the last two years, and I'm willing to do it again. I didn't know if anyone else is.
Through the Chair, I'll decline if I could. I know I just got added to the Committee on Aging, so I got one extra committee.
No, I will gladly accept it, then.
Through the Chair.
This is my community. This is what we sign up for.
Flores. I just want to move approval of this thing. Unless there's any other comments, sir.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote.
So Mike, you're taking over Behavioral Health, correct? Because if I got to start going back to.
No, I'm, I'm on Behavioral Health. I'm a veteran now, so I.
So it's been moved and seconded. Get a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
All right. Now we're down to item 16. Neil Hay.
Direct staff to perform a traffic study of Johnson Avenue and return to the Board with recommendations.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. So the item before you concerns Johnson Avenue, which is a local road. Per the county's classification system, it's east of Highway 99, located south of Messick Road. And so due to the ag processing facility that's located at essentially 99, it has a driveway to Johnson Avenue, and it has an encroachment permit. It's been issued that allows agricultural trucks to go in and out of the driveway through Johnson Avenue. Residents along the roadway have contacted the county offices, my department, concerned about the amount of truck traffic and the turn radius essentially from Messick to Johnson Avenue. So myself, as I've been out to the site and looked at it and looked at the roadway and the shoulder conditions, and in the staff report, we've provided a number alternatives. First one being to essentially provide a traffic study, a detailed traffic study, to either look at the turning movements that would be, you know, necessary and executed by the vehicles that would be going up and down the roadway. Once again, agricultural vehicles. So that would include essentially doubles, flatbed trailers, double bin trailers, and then equipment lowboys. The issue is, is that at the southwest corner of the intersection, there's a power pole. It has a guide wire that is in the county's right-of-way and is essentially with, could be considered within the turn radius of the intersection. So one aspect that's included in this is contacting, have my department contact PG&E and ask to potentially have the guide wires relocated. That would be kind of an output from having a traffic study done. With the traffic study, we look at the turn radiuses of different vehicles, and if there's sufficient asphalt for the trucks to make those turns. And there is no speed limit currently posted on the roadway. For the most part, the traffic volume is relatively low. I would gauge it at certainly less than 100 vehicles a day, probably less than 20 vehicles a day. During harvest operations or farming operations, which is a condition of the encroachment permit, you know, there is allowed to be more vehicles on a daily basis, but they have to be ag-related. Other alternatives that are included in the staff report is to include signage that essentially limits vehicles based on kingpin distance. Because of the turning movement, that could be a result of the traffic study. Mentioned contacting PG&E about the guide wire. One of the issues that residents have proposed is the fact that there essentially is insufficient paved roadway if a, if a vehicle comes down. Say, for example, a truck comes down the road for them to pull off, and there's just orchards on both sides of the road, as you can see. And so adding gravel to the shoulders of the roadway, so they'd be able to pull off and not be concerned about being stuck. And then final, what's included in the staff report is a draft ordinance that would, could impose a, for example, a 10-ton weight limit on the roadway. And so then vehicles would have to use other roads. The 10-ton vehicle limit allows for delivery trucks, you know, your FedEx, your Amazon, those type of things to be able to come and use the roadway, primarily two-axle trucks, but nothing heavier than, say, for example, an ag truck. And so those would either have to go out to Highway 99 or State Route 99 from the parcels, or you can see that on east of Johnson Avenue, there's a, essentially a field road that goes up to Messick. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
First, we've got some, a couple speaker cards here on the item. First speaker, Liz Cervantes.
Liz Cervantes, District 5. You'll be happy to know, Sutter County, that I already conducted a traffic study on Johnson Avenue. And I think what we need to look at is, there is no road. It is completely deteriorated long before these trucks got on there. Did the County of Sutter permit the ag? Did you permit that? Oh, God, not this again. Who can answer? Did we permit the ag processing plant?
Staff can comment on that. It's related to the.
So the building permits were issued for the facility. It's located on ag ground, so those are permitted uses. So consequently, there's no environmental documents that are needed, but building permits were previously issued. The buildings were constructed, and the buildings have been finalized.
Did you not anticipate that the ag producer was going to be driving trucks?
So the county, when they designated land as ag, take that all into account in the environmental document.
Okay. So I think more importantly, we need to go back. People are tired of traffic studies. People are tired of signs. Nobody reads them. I mean, you could put up 2 million "No Homeless" signs. Wouldn't help here. So people are tired of signs. The county is responsible for Johnson Avenue. I've been going on Johnson Avenue long before this facility was ever even completed, and the road has been crap. So to blame this on a single entity or to consider that we need a traffic study is a complete waste of taxpayer dollars. Okay? Can we all agree on that? Do we need a traffic study? Do we need a traffic study? I'm telling you, the road is terrible. It's in my backyard. Trust me on this, guys, you do not want to keep doing traffic studies. We just sent $400,000 for a traffic study to a county that we don't even live in. Okay? This is insanity and we are repeating it. And I'm really, really pissed off right now, Brandon Barnes.
Next speaker, Sarb Tiara.
We've been at that facility since 1980s, and we haven't done anything different than we're doing now. We had trucks and trailers there, and both sides of that road, we own all the ground. And one side is Mr. Joel and Mr. Gil. They have farming ground also there. They got walnuts, they got prunes. They're going to have trucks going in, taking the crops out. They got trucks going in, taking their equipment in, tractors, bulldozers, when the trees need to be out. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, I, I agree with the speaker before me. Studies, studies, studies. We have, if we want to do studies, the whole county needs to be studied. Right? But the thing is, the times we're going through right now, especially in the farming and this industry that we all in, we all need to see how many more rules and regulations you guys can put on. We, this community, this county needs, has other issues. Mr. Barnes needs help. Other fire department, they need help to protect, give us their safety that we need. Plus, and all these farmers that are working in this area, trying to bring revenue, you guys want to get them out of here too? What's next? This is ridiculous. We're fighting these trucks. Trucks feed everything around here, and as all you guys sitting on the front there, you guys know what trucks do for us. Especially the chairman, we've got Mr. McKelley, Mr. got Ziegemeyer, and we got Mr. Conant. Mr. Flores don't have any trucks, but I know the four gentlemen there, they deal with trucks all the time in their farming of. If they can manage without these trucks delivering equipment to their farms, I rest my case. Thank you.
Let's get our speaker cards, so bring it back to the.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, I originally, when this problem came up and doing a study, I thought, well, okay, what can it hurt? But we know the problem. I don't feel like we need to do a traffic study. Even if it was a comeback and they recommend a 10-ton weight limit, that eliminates the use of all ag trucks to any parcel through there. Now, I'm all for repaving that and, and, you know, putting a bigger shoulder with gravel. I could, I could definitely get on board with that, but I don't think we can in any way put a, a weight limit on this road when you have so much ag traffic on it. It's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Through the chair. So this question is more coupled for Neil. For, what's the cost of this traffic study, Neil? Do you estimate?
So it'd probably be about $500 of county staff time that's, I'll say, already included in the current budget.
Okay.
It'd be conducted by staff, and we have the equipment.
And, and so also, we received a letter from a constituent, I think, believe all of us got it, and they addressed the traffic, and they also were concerned about some flooding issues. Does, does Mr. Tiara's plant have adequate retention ponds for all the roof drainage and the paving drainage areas? As well, is that impacting neighbors?
So the plans that were submitted for the construction of the facility showed storm drain lines that essentially went to the southeast portion of his building into his orchard, and that's where the storm drains go, and that's historically where the storm water has gone to. There has been a historical flooding issue at the very south end of Johnson Avenue that's due to a dip in the roadway. And, and it continues. The county could do some, it's within the county's right of way. The county previously has not done anything for that section of the roadway. It's paved, but it's always been a, a lower portion.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is what year was that road put in to Mr. Tiara's plant from Johnson Avenue?
So I believe the work was done in 2020. I could probably reconfirm that, but I believe paving was done in 2020.
And wasn't one of the conditions of that, after he got, did it, he got an encroachment permit afterwards? And wasn't one of the conditions of that encroachment permit that he have only ag trucks on that? No cement trucks, no rock trucks, no delivery trucks?
Yes, that it would be used for agricultural trucks, yes.
Right. And so for those who aren't familiar with that road, it is a very narrow, one-lane road, six houses on the road, and the added truck traffic has definitely degraded the road, wouldn't you say, Neil?
To some degree, yes. I, I think historically, the road's been there for some time and has been utilized by the fields for harvest, but I, I will say, contrary to the public's opinion, the road's in, I'll say, good condition for a county road. I think that it has a good base and it has, you know, I'll say, good asphalt. It has some areas that may need some repair work, but overall, the road's in shape. But certainly, having truck traffic on a county roadway definitely utilizes the life roughly to one truck load, one truck, loaded truck is worth about 13,200 cars.
Right.
So that's the impact to a roadway.
And so Neil, one other question. So don't all the other parcels on that have access to either Highway 99 or the railroad avenue? The railroad right of way?
There's access, I believe, northward to Messick. Whether they through essentially what is a farm road on the east, whether they would, you know, I'll say, convert to using that from Johnson Avenue is, is something that they would just have to, I'll say, continue to use, and certainly, it's not an all-weather road, they're, they're farm road.
Through the chair. I just want to add one more thing. So I know Neil just mentioned that the road connecting the plant to Johnson may have been repaved in 2020, but there was already a paved road that existed there prior, because I've seen that on the map on Google Earth. So he just improved it, correct? Is that right? Okay.
But did he have a tie-in to the plant itself on the backside? I don't believe so. That was added when they paved the new addition, I think.
From his, from historical aerial photos, it seemed like there was somewhere between some version of a gravel to paved road. It's a little bit hard to tell what the material was. It was grayish in nature that essentially went to the, I'll just say, the eastern side of where the building complexes were constructed. You know, what it was actually constructed of and its, you know, width, it's a little challenging, but there was an existing roadway there from aerials.
Through the. Yeah, through the chair, thank you. So I've, I've been to the property and I've seen some of the other encroachments and so forth. First of all, I do agree, Neil, the actually road looks fairly good compared to some of the roads in my district and Supervisor Conant's district. How much does it cost to pave one mile?
If we were doing a.
Today?
Contract overlay is, we budgeted $400,000 a mile.
What, what was it about a year ago, two years ago?
Probably in, in the same ballpark, maybe, you know, I'll say, you know, 300, 325.
All right. So what I'm getting at is, when you look at the roads throughout the county, we have so many that need work. We meet throughout the year. Actually, when we have our main meeting with Public Works, with which Supervisor Conant and I are on, we talk about the roads and so forth, and something that each one of the supervisors kind of will send roads that they recommend that we take a look at in their districts. That's what we also talk about at our town halls and so forth. Hey, which roads you think need to be looked at? Like for me, Meridian. Matter of fact, the road that I live on in Sutter, it's, I think the last time it was probably repaved was probably 40, 50 years ago. But, well, I wish I knew a supervisor. But, but there's a lot more important roads, what I'm getting at, that need to be more, that, that need to be more, that are more prudent, more, that actually depend on safety and so forth, that need to be taken, taken a look at even. I have roads that come out of orchards and go right through the middle of some of the subdivisions in Sutter. And I can't justifiably tell those ag trucks and so forth that, hey, you guys can't bring that truck out when they're taking in a D6, 7, 8, or 9, or 10 to go in there and rip and so forth, which right now, because the price of almonds and walnuts aren't even worth harvesting, so you're seeing a lot of almonds and walnuts getting ripped out. Our poor peach trees, they're going to drown this year possibly. You're going to see them, same thing, they're going to get root rot. Hopefully they don't. Like I said, Supervisor Chair Baines and McKelley have the peaches. But either way, what I'm getting at is, there's a lot of work and stuff that goes on in agriculture, and it's just, I can't justifiably vote against telling someone that, hey, you can't pull that truck out. Now, what we could do is, I don't, I agree with Supervisor McKelley, I'm tired of studies. Even $500 is $500 we could spend towards the roadway or some sort, because it doesn't take genius to walk out there and say, hey, these shoulders need to be worked on. So with that, there are scraper attachments and so forth that fill up the sides of the roads. That was going to be my next question. It's kind of related, so I should be able to ask that question. Do we have one of those tools that go behind a dump truck and they just fall along the roadway?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So I'm assuming that's got to be a lot less, because what I would do is, I would recommend we just go in and fill up the sides with, with gravel, give it a nice roller. I would assume the cost on that road would probably, I'm going to guess, maybe 10,000 at the most?
Approximately, probably, yes.
Yeah. So by doing that, we're, we're building up the safety net of if a car were to have to drive around somewhere, they have that rock right there. And we could do that along other roads too, because we have some of those roads in Meridian that are narrow roads that people need to, it's more of like, it's a safety net that's going to hold up, because they're going to roll them in asphalt, roll it, vibrate, roll it, or whatever to, to where it's compacted. So that's where I stand on this. There's a, I, I, there was one other road out there that wasn't even permitted into the county road right of way too. So I don't believe in picking on individuals. I believe when I look at something, I look at it all in general, and then I ask the question like, so we're picking on this, David, but this roadway right here is, and just because I, everyone's got to follow the rules here. So, and a lot of people, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission. Trying to, hey, let's do it right the first time. But let's fix this issue and let's put in the minimalist amount to fix the issue, the solution, which would be fill up the sides of the road and rock them and roll them and not pay for a traffic study. And leave it to ag trucks. And ag trucks are trucks that are coming in with equipment that are going to be doing the groundwork. I consider those ag trucks too. I don't consider an ag truck, a truck that's pulling in a, a cargo container in the back that's loaded, so I'm not saying that this gentleman has ever done that, but I'm just saying, but agriculture trucks. So, thank you.
Supervisor Flores? Through the chair. Neil, we've got something in the mail, I guess. It was a letter, it had some pictures of gravel trucks and other types of trucks. Have we seen those at the property, or is this something that we just received the photos of?
So I haven't, I'll say, seen the letter, seen the photos myself. I've heard about it. I think, so the encroachment permit that we issued was essentially related to the agricultural operation there and their company trucks.
So gravel trucks are actually allowed there, right?
Well, if they're not, if they're bringing materials to a site for some type of purpose, I mean, that is, I'll say, allowed, allowed within the county at any parcel. For example, we don't require a permit for anyone to bring, like if you have a concrete truck coming to your property to put in the sidewalk.
Sure.
You don't need a building permit for a sidewalk, you can have concrete trucks drive down the roadway. It's, it's kind of a limited one-time use, and if they're not the parcel, property owner, business owner's equipment, then that's, I'll say, essentially not under the conditions of the encroachment permit, is how our department and office looks at it.
Okay, and then this recommendation, I mean, I'm assuming some complaints were given and then you were trying to determine whether or not the complaints are valid, and so you recommended that we do a traffic study. Is that where, that pretty much the simple terms of where we're at here?
Oh, I think the traffic study, certainly, yes. There's an option to identify, you know, how much roadway we want to see it's used. I think the, to address, you know, whether it's the concerns of the residents along the roadway, gravel shoulders is included as alternative because it's a viable way that it allows two vehicles to pass. The encroachment permit includes limitations on the number of vehicles and the types of vehicles on the roadway. It, it can be challenging to, yes, maybe confirm, you know, and validate the, the types of vehicles, but the only, you know, the other advantage of a traffic study would be to engineeringly confirm what can, what type of vehicles can turn from Messick to Johnson Avenue.
Got it. Okay, I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
If the PG&E were to move the guidelines and we were to add on shoulders, would, would that theoretically?
Theoretically, yes.
All right. So I would make a motion to, well, would that have to go before the committee?
To the chair.
Yes.
Neil, if you're going to make a motion regarding the gravel on the side, I just wanted to inquire on the cost and if a budget amendment would be needed. If so, we'll have to bring something back.
That's, that was going to be my next question.
So I think it's, as Supervisor Ziegemeyer stated, probably it's approximately about $10,000 worth of graveling or less, including staff and equipment time and materials. So our existing approved budget already includes a line item for general supplies. That's typically where we buy, you know, gravel and materials. So if your board were sort of direct, we could buy it within existing budgeted monies.
All right. With that being said, my motion would be to gravel the sides and to get with PG&E to move the guide wire.
A second to motion.
Sorry, it's been moved in a second. Get a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
No.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
No.
All right, motion carries. We are, I want to apologize, I have a couple speaker cards here that, that got buried if, and these items have been already approved on the consent, but there was a speaker card for item number one and 11. Does somebody still have a question? There's Zach Cross.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the time you're putting in and putting all your heads on the chopping block every election as a former Yuba County Supervisor candidate. The reason I came over here today, roughly the last year and a half, I've been hearing from some of your concerns constituents that are a little bit less abrasive than myself and some of my friends here today. And they've asked you guys a few things nicely here and there, and it's starting to be a concern because, you know, I'm pretty busy with my work over on the other side of the river and feeling obligated to come over here and help out, I don't think is something any of you want, nor is it something that I really want to get involved with, but I will. So Sutter Point is one of those topics of discussion that I believe a lot of your constituents will be fighting back against. I'm going to leave it at that on that one. But as far as your fire department funding and some of the homeless issues and some of the other things, I really strongly suggest to somebody who is mostly responsible for getting the ad hoc committee of Marysville to allow for two dispensaries years ago, that you guys take a look at this as something to basically, you know, shore up your budget issues without relying on another taxpayer voted in initiative to increase taxes, which the timing right now with state and federal politics going on and inflation and everything is just not going to be timely. So I came over here to ask you all to please listen to your constituents more so we can save us all a lot of headaches from me coming over here and doing what I do best, politically agitating. We did some work together, your predecessors and I, about 20 years ago, and I thought we were on a good path. And, you know, it, it doesn't take long, I guess, for things to unravel, but take a look at cannabis. If you guys were to build a dispensary at either side of the county, you know, to get the Chico in Sacramento, that would allow Yuba City to do its own ordinance later and shore up their budget shortfalls in the same way. You should look at the Black Rock Report talking about no bailouts, basically, from the federal government, and think about how that might be impacting our community and our state. our state as a whole in the future. Looking for new ways to generate tax revenue outside of taxing the, uh, general public more would be strongly advised based on what I'm hearing on my side. And thank you for all your work and good luck.
Thank you. I just want to apologize once again for, um, calling you out of order. I, I do have another speaker card from Liz Cervantes for item 11. But it's already been passed, we can read.
Okay, Liz Cervantes, District Five. I wanted, I had to ask if he was indeed Zachary Hamel. I was not sure if he was the gentleman, but he's sitting right down there in front, and he's done an extraordinary job of, um, informing the public, um, in the recent storms and, um, the evacuations and all of that. And I just, I really wanted to thank him for that. Um, my question, though, would be, when we have Zach, and he has demonstrated that he is a true professional in every way, I'm wondering why we are extending the term of the agreement for flood emergency response planning? I don't know if any of you can answer that, but I don't even know if it's the same thing, but we have Zach, and I'm trying to figure out revenue savings for Sutter County. Um, if anybody can address that, that would be great. But in the meantime, Zachary, oh, are you gonna address it? All right. Ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, well, sorry, just through the, is it okay? I mean, it was.
Yes, it is agendaized.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, first and foremost, the case and contract that is funded through the DWR grant that we have currently. And the reason why we're extending that grant is due to COVID delays. We were unable to meet for over a year in our planning efforts, so that's the reason why we need to extend the contract is so we can accomplish everything that we outlined in that grant.
No. No. Really passive.
Yeah, yeah, but Zach, that, that grant is a federal grant, correct? I, I read this, and I'm trying to remember.
It's a state grant through the Department of Water Resources.
Oh, it's a state grant. Okay. And it's fully funding the study?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. All right, now we're back on track, I think. Item seventeen, Neil?
Once again, Chair and Supervisors, uh, so this item is in regards to the California Building Code. It gets updated every three years. Uh, so you may remember that, uh, just a few meetings ago, Chief Shalowitz, uh, brought before you and presented the fire code, which is, uh, also a portion of the, the California Code for, uh, the health and safety. So we have brought before you the adoption of the 2022 Building Code, uh, that will go into effect. It, uh, does not include any significant changes to the code that we feel will increase the cost of construction for any of our residents, for either commercial or residential. Your staff report includes a graph, um, essentially from our monthly report to the county administrator, uh, that gives a rough sense of, uh, the permit volume between last fiscal year and the current fiscal year. Uh, and, um, for the most part, you know, there are, the solar panel installations continue to be extremely popular, uh, and there's a number of other permits that, uh, essentially have been, uh, issued by our department and essentially are waiting for the, I'll say the dry weather for, uh, construction and inspections to take place. Um, otherwise, our departments have seen that the cost of construction itself, you know, can fluctuate and go up in, in reviewing some of the state's data. Uh, they, in 2021, they projected that there was a 13.4% increase in the cost of construction. In '22, there was a, uh, increase in, of 9.3%. And just since December to January, they've actually shown a increase of 4.8% in construction. So there are some factors that are affecting the cost of construction, but the actual changes to the Building Code, uh, will not, uh, in the opinion of our building official. Uh, the county council's office also reviewed the, uh, the ordinance that is included with the staff report for the adoption of the Building Code. It will be in effect for three years, so to make it clear, any building permit that was previously issued before the adoption of this code, um, essentially gets to be built under the previous conditions, uh, the previous Building Code. Any new building permit application would be subject to this new, uh, Building Code. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. There's no speaker card, so bring it back to the board for any questions.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, um, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
I can ask the clerk to please read the title of the ordinance?
An Ordinance of the County of Sutter Amending Sutter County Ordinance Code by Amending Chapter 1300 Pertaining to Building Safety Codes.
Thank you. Item eighteen, Neil?
Adoption of a resolution authorizing the Director of Development Services to prepare and submit a grant application to the California Department of Water Resources under Round Two Integrated Regional Water Management Implementation Grant Solicitation and execute a grant agreement with the California Department of Water Resources benefiting various counties and agencies in the Sacramento River Funding Area.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and members of the Board. Guadalupe Rivera, Principal Engineer with the Development Services Department, here to discuss the item on the agenda. Sutter County works collaboratively, collaboratively with, uh, Butte County, Calusa, Glan, Shasta, and Tahama Counties as part of the Northern Sacramento Valley Integrated Regional Water Management Group, otherwise known as NSV IRWM. There is currently a grant opportunity, uh, being administered by DWR for shovel-ready projects, um, of which 1.2 million is available in the Sacramento River Funding Area, uh, projects that are within the NSV IRWM plan. The item before you is to request, uh, authorization to submit, uh, a grant application on behalf of the project proponents, uh, within the NSV IRWM, as noted in the staff report. Uh, the NSV IRWM, for your prior knowledge, or for your knowledge, uh, the NSV IRWM Board , uh, previously approved the project list in a, in a prior meeting, the project list in a prior meeting. One of the projects that's listed is, uh, to replace a portion of the water main segment by the city of Yuba City. If the grant is awarded, uh, part of the funding will be used to cover county staff time for the, uh, managing of the grant. The grant application is due February 1st with grant funds to be expended by the end of December, by the end of, uh, 2027. There is no fiscal impact associated with the, uh, submitting of the grant application at this time, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
There are no speaker cards. Are there any questions from the board? Looking for a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Motion passes. Back to Neil again.
Authorization for the county administrator to provide a letter of support for a grant application being submitted by Yuba Sutter Transit to the California State Transportation Agency for a 2023 Transit and Intercity Rail Capital Program.
Good afternoon, once again, uh, yes, Guadalupe and myself are kind of tag teaming all of our staff reports. So, uh, our department, uh, the county was contacted by Yuba Sutter Transit. They are continuing to seek grant funding for the construction of their new, uh, facility, uh, over on the Marysville-Yuba County side of the river so that they can support, uh, essentially zero emission buses, uh, and expand their system service. So the staff report includes a letter of support, uh, that could be signed by the county administrator and submitted in support of the grant, which is for the 2023 Transit and Intercity Rail Capital Program. In case you're aware, they've already been awarded a 2022 RACE, uh, grant, uh, funding for their project, and so they're continuing just to seek all the, uh, necessary funds from the variety of sources so that they can, uh, progress with the, uh, the design and construction. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Through the chair.
Supervisor Zigamire.
I got a question. What are they gonna do with all the power that's needed? I mean, you look throughout the state, you know, tested with their new trucks and so forth, and I'm all for if there's, but, I mean, let's say we have a storm, three or four-day storm, and there's no power. Does that mean there's no transit buses moving? So I'm curious, the whole, I, I couldn't find that in the staff report.
Well, I think just to explain, so their project is in the very early stages, and so they're seeking all the various funding for the design and construction. The design will include essentially an environmental impact report because of its magnitude, and then one of those aspects will be, uh, essentially that very thing, the service, and whether they would use, for example, backup generators to provide a certain amount of service. Um, there are a lot of agencies that are going away from diesel and going to either, you know, natural gas, propane, for example. But yeah, all that will be, uh, addressed in the project's environmental document.
All right, thank you.
There's no further questions. I had a motion.
Move for approval of the recommended action.
Second.
It's moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Item twenty, Zachary Hamel.
Authorization for the Office of Emergency Management to apply for, execute, and administer the 2022 County Coordinator Grant in the amount of $175,000 and approval of an adjustment to the fiscal year 2022-23 adopted budget, increasing appropriations and revenue by $175,000 for grant activities.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board Supervisors. Again, my name is Zachary Hamel. I'm the Emergency Operations Manager for Sutter County. Before you is a California Fire Safe Grant for the total of $175,000, um, and the associated budget amendment. The goal of this grant is to educate, encourage, and develop countywide collaboration and coordination amongst various wildfire mitigation groups. Sutter County was selected as one of 21 counties to receive this 18-month grant. The grant will cover the administrative costs relevant to the countywide coordination efforts, and there is no match required. There are eight activities identified in the work plan of this grant: creating a hub of information, a best practices portal, compiling statistics about the risk and opportunities jointly used, evaluating different grant applications, and identifying mutual data needed that could be published to be more successful with grants, liaison between the fire agencies and the neighborhood groups and fire safety councils, public education efforts through social media, press releases, meetings, and webinars, coordinating hazard mitigation grants and coordinating hazard mitigation projects, and lastly, coordinating and developing the pre-fire attack plan for the Sutter Buttes. Uh, with these funds, the Sutter County Office of Emergency Management can hire limited-term staff and/or contractors that will collaborate with representatives from Sutter County and establish the wildfire mitigation groups within the county to build, coordinate countywide wildfire mitigation strategy. Say that five times fast.
All right, uh, there's no speaker cards. Is there any questions from board members? So you know questions, I'm looking for a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 21. Leanne Link?
Authorize a 7% salary increase to class title of welfare investigative technician, extend 2.5% longevity pay to communications manager and correctional lieutenant, approve advanced step placement to step nine for extra help assistant district attorney, and approve advanced step placement to step six for supervising public safety dispatcher.
Good afternoon, Leanne Link, Assistant County Administrator on behalf of Human Resources Director Gina Rowland. And, um, I'm here, uh, today to present a couple of items. The first two on this list are really cleanup items, um, that are tied to previously agreed upon, um, labor agreements. Um, the first one just extends, uh, the raise that was provided to other employees and inadvertently left off on the welfare investigative technician. So that just cleans up that item. And the second one is to extend, uh, 2.5% longevity pay to the communications manager and correctional lieutenant, and that helps us to avoid compaction between classifications that supervise and, um, those who are supervised by them. The third item is to, uh, prove an advanced step placement to step nine for an assistant district attorney, um, the incumbent, or the proposed incumbent's name is Elizabeth Norton, um, who is a, uh, longtime prosecutor and has a, a large amount of experience and would come in as a retired annuitant, limited to 960 hours per fiscal year. And finally, um, an advanced step, uh, placement request to step six for Kayla Mccone, who would come in as a supervising public safety dispatcher. I think the board is very well aware of the challenges that the sheriff has had with dispatch positions, and, um, sometimes we do have to request a higher, um, salary level in order to get the best qualified candidate. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
There's no speaker cards on this item. Any questions from the board? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approve item number 21.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 22, Molly Bloom.
Approval of a memorandum of understanding with the United States Army Corps of Engineers Sacramento District to add a native plant garden to the Sutter County Museum and authorization for the museum director curator to sign the MOU.
All right, um, good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Board of Supervisors. Um, so after a recent project in the area, the United States Army Corps of Engineers Sacramento District proposed a native plant garden be created to serve as a community resource in the area. And so the USACE Office of Counsel and the Sutter County Council have prepared an MOU that both parties agree is ready for signatures. Per the terms of the MOU, the Army Corps is supplying funding, completing work for planting the garden, creating educational materials such as signs for the garden and brochures, and developing a maintenance plan in consultation with museum staff. The United Auburn Indian Community of the Auburn Rancheria and the Enterprise Rancheria Estamueca Maidu Tribe have been working with us on the process and will continue to provide consultation for native plants and educational materials created through this project. So if approved, um, the museum director curator will sign the MOU, followed by the US Army Corps Sacramento District signing the MOU, and by the end of calendar year 2023, a native plant garden will be added to the museum property and serve as an educational resource for the community. Um, in terms of the fiscal impact, there's no additional impact on the general fund with approval of the recommended action. Um, this proposed garden, uh, intends to reduce the amount of water used to maintain the museum grounds, and we believe that will provide an anticipated long-term savings and cost to the general fund. Uh, so the native plant garden will add an educational and cultural resource to the community, strengthen relationships with tribal partners, and lower the maintenance burden on the general services grounds team, all at no cost to Sutter County. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Through the chair. So Molly, we don't know yet where this is gonna be, how big it's gonna be, uh, those kind of questions yet, right?
Um, yes, that's correct. Uh, we did have a preliminary site visit with the, um, Army Corps and the tribes, um, and other partners, and several, uh, members of the county staff also attended. Uh, and so, um, preliminary, um, decisions were to hold it on the, um, the side of the, uh, museum that is on Stevens Way, just for the best, uh, area for the plants, um, but that hasn't been decided. Um, there is a minimum set in the MOU of, um, 2,500 square feet, uh, space be made available for the garden.
And, and there, the Army Corps and a tribe are doing all the design work, too, correct?
Um, yes, so they will, uh, per the terms of the MOU, they will be providing the funding, um, and coordinating with the, any contractors to choose suitable plants, um, to do the actual planting, um, and to install it, and to deliver a maintenance plan for us so that we know how to maintain it moving forward.
Through the chair.
Supervisor Flores?
Just like a move approval of the recommended action.
Okay.
So moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Item 23, Molly.
Approval of a program agreement with the California Humanities to receive a Humanities
Approval of a program agreement with the California Humanities to receive a Humanities for All Program or Project Grant in the amount of $25,000 for the period of January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2024. Authorization for the museum director curator to sign and execute the agreement and approve an adjustment to the fiscal year 2022-23 adopted budget, increasing appropriations and revenues in the museum's budget.
All right, thank you. So in August of 2022, the museum submitted a proposal to the Humanities for All Grant Program through, that's administered by California Humanities, requesting $25,000 to work with the local partners and community members to create and install a permanent exhibit on the Black History of Yuba Sutter at the museum. This funding would also support free public programs and events for the community that connect to the new Black History exhibit at the museum. In December of 2022, staff were notified that the museum was awarded $25,000 for the Yuba Sutter Black History Project, and we were one of 10 organizations to receive this funding across the state. So the CEO of Lifting Others Forward Together, or LOFT Institute nonprofit, will be serving as the project's humanities advisor in support. And this grant program will provide 25,000 that would otherwise not be available to the county. The way we wrote the budget sets it so that approximately $10,270 of the grant will directly cover expenses that are currently allocated to the general fund, so there's a beneficial offset to the fiscal year 2022-23 adopted budget, and there is no additional impact to the general fund with approval of this action.
All right, so you have no speaker cards and questions from the board? Looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So moved in second, roll call vote please.
Supervisor McKelley.
Aye.
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Aye.
Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Supervisor Conant.
Aye.
Item 24, RCU.
Authorization for the county administrator to provide a letter of support for a grant application being submitted by Yuba Sutter Transit Authority to the Sacramento Area Council of Governments for the Next Generation Transit Facility Environmental and Design Project.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Supervisors, thank you. This got separated on the agenda, it's pretty much what Mr. Hay spoke about earlier with the Yuba Sutter Transit Grant, except this is a grant instead of to the state, this is to Secog. So this one is for $3.5 million for the Next Generation Transit Facility at 6035 Avondale Avenue, which is the first cross street as you're going under the railroad out on North Beale. So the rest of the information is the same, it's to build a new facility for Yuba Sutter Transit.
Okay, I do have one speaker card, Liz Cervantes.
Honorable Chair, Supervisors, Liz Cervantes, District 5. I wasn't, I just put in a speaker card because I wanted to go in under Steve Smith. This meeting today, and I don't know if maybe I'm out of line talking right now because it doesn't have anything to do with transit, should I wait until he's finished with his second item before I come back, or do you want to hear it now?
What's up transit?
Probably more appropriate at the next agenda item, but if the board is, if the board chairs want to hear you now.
I can wait until the next agenda item, I'm sorry for the inconvenience.
Okay, so there's no other speaker cards, any questions from board members? So you have no questions, got to get a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, forget a roll call vote please.
Supervisor McKelley.
Aye.
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Aye.
Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Supervisor Conant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. For follow-up reports and announcements, I just wanted to reiterate what our Emergency Operations Manager Zach Hamel mentioned is, if you know anyone in the public who has had damage to a home or business, they don't have to wait to get an official estimate, they can give us their best guess. We will get the information to Zach and make sure that it's included in the claim. So that's all I have, thank you.
I thought today's meeting was going to look a little bit different. When I got the agenda, I was quite surprised that fire, there wasn't going to be an appearance item by Chief Shallowitz. I also was disappointed that we did not have the complete facilities list of what county owned properties or rented properties. I did talk to a supervisor and he cleared that up for me, it's going before the Real Estate Commission, and that was satisfactory to me. As far as fire, I have come across a proposition that is 30 years old, 1993, the state of California, 58% approved, a sales tax, it's a half-cent sales tax, to be used strictly for safety. Prop 172 began funding in 1993, and to my knowledge, and I must say that Nate Black has been very cooperative with my questions, he's been transparent and helpful. But I would like to know why Sutter Fire was taken out of Prop 172. It very clearly lists sheriff, police, DA, corrections, and fire, but our fire is not being funded by Prop 172. Now, I don't want you to feel like I'm blindsiding you, I had no idea what Prop 72, 172 even was, okay? So this has been an education. But I am so tired of seeing the fire chief come up and basically lament about his financial woes and talking about his firemen and the facilities, the hours, whatever, whatever. I would encourage each one of you to look up Prop 172, it's going to come as quite a surprise. And you'll have to ask Nathan Black how much money is in the account, it's a safety account. There is also another account with the MO memorandum of understanding that it be maintained should the 172 funds dip below a certain level. I am concerned about Sutter County, I do not feel like we are healthy as a county, and I think that we need to treat Sutter County more as a business, all of you are businessmen. I am asking today that the head of Sutter County, which is Stephen Smith, resign, and I am asking that each one of you push for it. I know you're not going to be able to answer me, and I know I only have three minutes, but we are headed in the wrong direction.
All right, thank you for your comment, I guess, one thing I'd just ask the council, this item was not agendized?
Correct, so we cannot enter into discussions on the comments.
Through the chair.
Yes, Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
I would like to ask, at our next meeting, let's put it on the agenda, and I'd like Mr. Black to show up to that meeting in person, all right? Just so we could be as transparent, I mean, there's nothing to hide here, is what I'm getting at. And so if we could do that, so then we could actually, can discuss it?
All right, we have no correspondence at this time, then are there any district reports by supervisors or any consideration that anybody would like to make, start District One?
I don't have anything, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Five?
Yeah, so Zach, thanks for your report, and I'd just like to tell the public, Zach and his crew and the volunteer fire departments in Pleasant Grove and Eastlake have done a great jobs. We barely dodged the overs, well, it did overspill parts of Auburn Ravine and Coon Creek. They are not in a reclamation district, they're not in a drainage district, it's private lands that farmers built these little levees to stop rice water, but they don't stop major flood events, and, or they shouldn't anyway, but they managed to survive this flood event, and so we managed to dodge that bullet, so I think most of the, very minimal damage in the Pleasant Grove area, although with a lot of drainage issues. And through the, should I do the memory?
Yes.
Okay, so I have two obituaries today, I have Ricky Wayne Kidd, born August 2, 1960, and passed away January 4, 2003. Ricky was born in his home in Oliver's, California on the 2nd of August, 1960, he passed away January 4 of Venice Health, right out in Marysville. He always liked to bear hunt and partnered with many hog and dog hunts, and was a, he was a great guy, just great with his kids, and his kids and Mark had played baseball together and football, and he'll be dearly missed. And then the other one I have is, and I don't have a lot of information yet, but it's a save the date for Scott Ornsby, and I'm not even sure the date of his death, but I think it was around Christmas time, and I haven't found it in the paper, but I know he passed away. Scott was a business owner and owned a gunsmithing shop in Yuba City in the 80s, and the, March 3rd is Friday, is, it would be his 75th birthday, and they're having a celebration of life on, at 4 o'clock on, at Riosel Hall. So I'd like to close in memory, his memory and Mr. Kidd, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I know we're in an economic recession, but there's a lot happening in the second district, so exciting things. Any of you haven't gone to my boba spot yet, I love boba, some people don't, but it's a great iced tea place, it's just opened up. Good luck getting in though, because it's crowded and lots of people are going in, their business is going strong. Holiday Inn Express is about to open within the next couple of months, I've been reporting on that the last few months, and it's great to see the color going up and seeing the Holiday Inn Express with the multi-stories, and hopefully by the next couple of months it'll be open, so looking forward to that. And then there's a big expansion going on, if you haven't been down to Pluma Street, with Happy Viking, they're expanding the size of their restaurant, which I'm also happy about, because every time I go in there, we have to wait a long time just to get in. So on a sad note, I do want to offer a letter of condolence to a good friend of mine, Gina Sito, who passed away a couple of weeks ago, is a really, really good man, so I just want to have a letter sent, please.
I'd like to be added to that letter, please.
Through the chair, me as well, great man.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Okay, a few things, marijuana dispensaries, sorry, not going to give my vote on that. I don't think they're the answer for taxes, you have it in Marysville, fine with that. Well, I love this community, born and raised here, you know, from the lily, blah, 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 but you know what? Okay, so Butte House Road, we talk about running it like a business. Butte House Rose, Butte House Road had a chip sale done by a private company, and I do agree with you on that one. As a matter of fact, I drove down that road about two weeks afterwards, and I saw the potholes and stuff coming up, and guess what, we called and they come back out there and they took care of it. That's the awesome thing about working with a private company, they came out and they warranted it. So talk about, we just saved $500 on a study, you know, that's a few percent more going towards the, filling up the sides of the road there. But we got to talk about, one thing I'd like to see us have is more of a, we've talked about this before in our CEO's office, is having something on our website, and we could title as Transparent Sutter County or something, where people can ask questions on the site, and we could post answers, and they could stay on there, and they could be categorized in different departments, and something where like, hey, you guys just voted on giving Placid County 400,000. Well, the answer would be, it's split between three counties, and in the grand scheme of things, it could equate to about 130,000, but it's a stoplight that has to be paid for by three counties, so it's a study, it's going to be split, so it's actually not 400,000, we will know once we, once it gets there. Developers, developers have to pay their fair share, just like in any county. Sutter Point is paid for by developers. Developers, we're going to use them to put in those pipes and infrastructure that we could use down the road for commercial development that is going to be lured here to Sutter County. That's going to help with more tax revenue, all right? That's key there. Other than that, like I said, we talked about the Prop 172, possibly putting that up on, so we can talk about that, agendized. I want to circle back, quick back, I love this community, these fellow, everyone here loves this community, we're going to do our best to help this community get better. I'm glad we have our DA in the house right here, Jen Dupree, thank you very much for showing up, it's always good to see department heads. And so with that, we're going to close, I'd like to close in memory here, we got Sue Schultz, Tom Siller's mom, that's very sad to hear, amazing lady in the community, was married to Neil Siller, see all these helicopters and so forth, Siller, just a great family, very sad for that passing. Gregory Mann, who passed away a few weeks ago out of Gridley. Greg was from Gridley, but he farmed throughout Sutter County for Mariani Nut Company and donated a lot in this community, so sad, I spent a lot of time in Fort Bragg with him, great man. Gary Stone from Gridley, the unofficial mayor of Richville, I was sad to hear of his passing from his son yesterday, he actually passed last month, and he was just a first-class farmer individual, once again, was from that area, but bought a lot of equipment from Sutter County, from different dealerships and so forth, and it's going to be tough there. But other than that, I want to thank you all for showing up, thank you.
Okay, you had to do those letters as well, and then I'd like to, is there any other, anything reports or, all right, so a couple of letters of sympathy and condolences to be sent to the families of Mr. Burdell, Surrender Cor, Grameke Nagra, and then I'd like to have two letters, I guess resolutions made, one would go out for the 100-year celebration that they had at Grace Baptist Church just last week, they celebrated 100 years out there, if we get a resolution drawn up from the county to present to them and the congregation there. And also, the California Canyon Peach Association is celebrating 100 years today, maybe we'd get some type of letter or resolution sent out to them as well. Other than that, for February's calendar, I would like to request the staff prepare some proclamations, one on Black History Month, National Engineers Week, February 19 through 25th, Library Lovers Month, and National Teen Dating Violence Month to be presented to Casa de Esperanza, and make that an annual request. And that's all I have, there's nothing else, I can get a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Move and approve, roll call vote please.
Supervisor McKelley.
Aye.
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Aye.
Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Supervisor Conant.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned, we're going to have to.
We do have a closed session.
Yes, that's what I was going to get at.
Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one potential case pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9, subsection D, subsection
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe with lessons in person and personalized, instruments including guitars and amps, horns, strings, strings for instruments, and a myriad of music and sound equipment. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe.